All this meeting to order at 10 o'clock in the morning. This is a special meeting of the San Mateo County Harbor District Board of Commissioners. It is October 27, 2025, and it is 10 a.m. Let's start as always with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, your God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to roll call, please. Senator Carter, President. Mr. Shane Crowley. Mr. Matush.
President.
Mr. Zemke.
President.
Mr. Damarot.
President.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment and questions. First of all, I want to thank everyone for being here in the audience and on the board and the staff for a special meeting. This is an important meeting. Thank you. Public comments and questions. Publicly address the Harbor Board for a limit of two minutes. We have a timer. And so we will start with Janet Braier.
Thank you for arranging this. I wanted to start with a quick question. There's this flyer that's gone out for the meeting this afternoon. And there's one flyer. This one says, can't make the meeting. Email your docs to Caltrans. Because Mueller sponsoring, sponsoring, I thought he has to call Caltrans. But there's also another one that says to send comments to the Harbor District. And my question is, why, why is that being done? And it causes confusion, I think. And will those comments be made public? I think that this, the project, we have three, three options. I think the option that's best for everybody is the option on the west side of the highway. If indeed, the purpose of this is to address Harbor District needs, that the current space that you're considering on across from Spanglers is too far. It's not going to meet the needs of the harbor. I think the best thing we could do would be to evict the RV park because they are in breach of that lease. They haven't done the bathroom. They're hiding the parking. They're violating the Coastal Commission Act that they were supposed to comply with. I'm also concerned about the, the strip, this overflow parking becoming something else. In the addendum on the RFP, it says, yes, all should be included. We're going to have picnic tables, shade structures, drinking fountain, bike racks, perhaps a public, public restroom, et cetera, et cetera. So this thing is all getting so blown out. It started when I was here and according to the prior meetings, that this was going to be an answer to Caltrans taking away the bike lane. Now, all of a sudden, you pivoted and it's no longer about Caltrans and the highway parking being taken away. It's all about you're, you're turning it now to the harbor. This isn't, is not for the harbor. I would like to know who this is for, why you think you have to reserve that property on the west side for quote, revenue generation and what the plans are. If you can answer those questions.
For 14 seconds.
Thank you.
Your comment. Along to Nancy Nirhan. You may wait. Keith, would you like to wait as well? Thank you. I have no more speaker slips. I will make a brief summary. I will read who the public comment online is from. Jill Grant, who wants us to take back the surfers, recreate the original Surfers Beach parking lot. And then there is one from J.S. Nauman Newman, a resident of El Granada since 1999. He lists the problems with a parking lot, traffic congestion, access emergency concerns, pedestrian safety, safety, public impact and aesthetics. And the fact that the justification doesn't hold up. Another one from Nathan Wilkinson, who does not see any need for additional parking. The Barber family who wants to end the lease of the RV park. And Matt Allen, thank you for the public comment. Caltrans project to add new bike lanes on Highway One is unnecessary. It will remove parking. The new best place is on the west side of Highway One. Thank you to all of those. Do we have any more public comment? You may, but we don't do a back and forth here. But you can make a public comment about it. That's, that's, it was a gravel lot totally out of compliance with Coastal Commission clean water standards. And it was an ad hoc parking lot. It was where the RV park is now. The south one on the and it, like I say, for those who are worried about coastal act compliance, that would be so totally out of compliance that it would get shut down. It would take a lot of money to turn that into a parking, the parking lot it was set 50 years ago as well. We'd have to bring in all that gravel. And we have one from Carrie Di Martini to the Harbor District and to Caltrans. She was not confused. She's a 50 year residence of, resident of the area, does not like the proposed Caltrans bike lane. And she's asking for alternatives to be researched. So Nancy, would you like to? Just, just you, you can just say one. Please come up here.
Thank you so much. My name is Nancy Nirhan, a resident of Half Moon Bay. And I rarely speak in public about my family. If you know me, you know, I'm on the quiet side. But I do feel compelled to do so based on information that I feel is being passed around, which is criticizing the family for the operation of the businesses that we do here. And I feel like there's so much misinformation that's being passed around. And I feel that a lot of this misinformation is just hurting the knowledge that people that live here don't have access to the facts. So I think it would be, you know, nice if there was more of an open environment where people could really find out the facts. I feel that decisions that are made that impact everybody's life on the coast side should be made based on accurate information and facts. That's all I'd like to say at this time.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Very much. And you're a very good speaker. Thank you.
Ed Nierhan. I live in Half Moon Bay for the past 55 years. Misinformation is Coastal Commission back in 1998. I went through the process with the city and Coastal Commission to, to secure this public park, RV park. That's what they wanted, the city of Half Moon Bay. We did that and came back that there was one CDP was missing. So in 2019, we got involved again, went through the whole thing. We met the Coastal Commission folks here, Harbor District, as well as city of Half Moon Bay. We went through the process. We spent a bunch of money, did everything right. Turn around. As a matter of fact, right now, I can walk you, young lady there, and show you that I meet all the conditions which you are saying that we don't. And so it's pretty sad that person gets it with misinformation, come in front of the board, trying to take a business man apart. That is wrong. And, and then, in my book, if I have something wrong, I would try to reach out to the person, the businessman or somebody say, look, explain me what's going on. I'm here. I live here. My kids live over here. And we operate a good business. We upfront, but then saying, take this business away, there's consequences to that. And I just want you to know that I'm here. I'm open book. Anybody, the board, general manager, anybody else, any of the public wants to meet me on the side, I can show you there. But, but misinformation, writing something wrong or something, there's another, another memo was written. That person doesn't have, it's zero credibility in my book. And so with that said, I appreciate your time. I'm here. My family's here. If there's anything that needed to be addressed, we are here to address that. Thank you very much.
No more speaker slips, no more speakers. Do we have speakers online? Online? Go ahead, Sid.
Thank you. I'd just like to say I'm not in favor of the crosswalk that for the east side parking lot that you guys have planned. And it's bad enough that Caltrans wants to take away parking. I know the, for many years, the RV park wouldn't allow people to use the public bathroom at their parking lot, which was supposed to be for the public. And now the surfers were parking on the east side, but if they lose their parking spots, people are going to be parking on the inside of El Granada, who knows where, but walking across the highway at random points. And a parking, I mean, sorry, a crosswalk isn't going to change that because people will still be parking randomly all over and crossing the highway wherever they want. So the only people that might use that parking lot are the Sam's customers. It's obviously channeled right towards Sam's restaurant. I think your best solution to keep the public happy, and believe me, it seems like they're pretty up in arms. The people that live in El Granada, I don't, I live in Moss Beach, but I find it really frustrating to have to stop it on Highway One all the time for jaywalkers. I know it's not, you know, it's considered legal now to cross in front of a highway traffic, but nevertheless, people towing kids, babies, coolers and beach gear shouldn't have to cross the highway. They should park on the east side and schlepp their stuff down to the beach that way. So I would appreciate it a lot if the Harbor District would consider keeping their lots on the east side and parking cars on the east side if you're planning to actually help Caltrans out with providing 75 parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you.
She meant west side.
I, she did, she did say east side and it's in the public record.
Thank you.
Excuse me, this is not a conversation. You, you can text her if you would like. Let's move on. Okay. Raise their hand. Oh, okay. Michael Ferreira. Oh, Michael Ferreira. Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. I must confess that I'm not entirely sure what the subject is that we're addressing. But I will start with the RV park. I somewhat understand the frustration of people trying to find anything other than paving the parking lot as is currently proposed. But the Nirhan family has followed the law, has a coastal development permit. The Coastal Commission, the city have all been through this. It's the impossible dream to ever change that, and it's probably not fair to the Nirhans to keep aggravating them with these claims. If we're allowed to talk about the parking lot proposal, I have to say it. I don't quite understand how we got to this spot. The, the feelings of the people in El Granada should have been easily anticipated. And it just wasn't really very smart politics to, to ignite this controversy. There are ways to find other solutions to this without doing that and without such a large financial adventure by the harbor. So those are my two comments on that. I imagine that I'll be allowed to comment at the other meeting later today. But I thought I would address this this morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving right along then, any more comments, do you see? Yes, Dan Hagerty. Oh, Dan Hagerty, please.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I want to say I agree with Speaker Michael Ferreira. As you know, the community is very incensed over this proposal. It's just not acceptable due to all of the ramifications of increased traffic congestion that would flow into El Granada. Safety issues, et cetera. Must look west for parking solutions. Come up with internal plans of having more flexibility with parking in the extra long parking spaces when needed and not used. Have a a community focused meetings on this and have real honest answers and solutions, potential solutions. Just essentially plan better, utilize parking on the side of the highway when it can be safely five feet off the highway near the harbor. Wayfinding for the shoreline access parking in the Oceana Hotel. Just do a better job managing the existing parking and do not expand into El Granada and cause all of the known potential problems that, that would result. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? No more public comments. No more public comments. We will close the public hearing on this matter and move on to the discussion where the public will be again invited to speak on that particular subject, which is Pillar Point Surfers Beach Safe Parking Project. And it is to receive the comments from our general manager and to discuss whether we should take an official position as a board for the member of the Board of Supervisors in the state senate. As we have not submitted any plans to the county, we haven't finished developing our plans. We're looking for alternatives in our plans and always have been. So we are going to be presenting probably where we possibly, once the board discusses it, where we are in our planning process. And so that it is, so people finally get a piece of information. Hiring a consultant and then drawing up the tentative plans takes a while. So it, this is our opportunity now to make the tentative plans, not the final, not the approved, but the tentative plans up to date. And since consultants haven't finished their job, there may be other proposals. Thank you. Let's start with Jim. And some people have the staff report. It is online and if I will see if, I'm sure staff can present more of the agenda and plans that we are going to be referring to for anybody who wants. Please let us know. There must be some technical difficulties. What a surprise. Sorry about that. No, thank you for getting it right before we launch into it. You're getting to the page, I'm assuming. Thank you. Well, Jim's going, starting, I will, as president, make a slight interjection and tell you that the first trunk and treat affair at the harbor, it was a great success on Saturday. It was fabulous. We had people from San Francisco, from San Jose. We had lots of people from El Granada, Montero and Half Moon Bay as well. Minnesota. And Belmont. And everyone is looking forward to our second annual trunk or treat. People, what it is for those of us, I just learned about it. I'm a little slow. You bring your car to a central point, you open up your trunk and you decorate the outside of your car and the trunk area. And you bring candy. So it's, it, kids can go trunk or treating and, and there was one car, actually several cars that were set up to take photos with the kids. We had a photo backdrop. We had paint your pumpkins and treasure hunting either in the water or in sand. And every, I didn't see one from, people were all so happy.
I did. Oh, I can't, it's too big.
And we're, we're looking at doing it, making the second annual next year. It was the Saturday before Halloween, so it's not in conflict. The purpose of it was to give the littles, you know, the little kids a place where they could come out and see Halloween during the day and enjoy Halloween trick or treating. We, and, and to bring their parents along, of course. So we had lots of little kids in costume. It was so much fun. They were so happy. Jim, are you ready?
The file's loading.
Okay, the file's loading. So I'll keep going. Because this is my favorite, my favorite subject. Because the little kids were out enjoying the harbor. They were oohing and aahing at the seagulls and Regular meeting. It's the always, the, the issues. And they, they all came and then they wandered around exploring the harbor a little bit too. It was, it was a great way to make the harbor more known to the public. Since this was our first one, we learned a lot, of course. And my thought, after having talked to a couple of business owners in Princeton, is trying to figure out a way that maybe each of the businesses can have, bring a car and decorate it and show off the businesses that are here that a lot of people don't see because they're zipping by on the highway. Everybody in Montero, Moss Beach, El Granada and Half Moon Bay knows about these things. But for other people, we're trying to make the harbor a more welcoming place for all ages.
I'll also interject, the next day, Sunday morning, we had the witches' battle. So that was very successful. Also, I think I stopped counting at 200. And they, they would paddle around the harbor and, and that was a lot of fun for all. We were trying to get the witches' battle and the trunk or treat on the same day, and that will probably happen next year. So that in the morning, you know, the witches will paddle around and then they, everybody brings the kids in the afternoon. But, but that was another highly successful event. So we, which points out, people want to come to the harbor and they want to do things. And they want to see things and they want to participate. And it's not just our local community. They're coming from all over the peninsula. And you know, that's part of the challenge.
Well, and we represent the entire entirety of San Mateo County. So I'm watching his finger.
I'll add.
Please add.
Yes, so it was such a successful event. I mean, one of the things that we're trying to do is bring people to the harbor. And I think we had at least 200 to 300 people and for sure, a lot of trick or treaters, because I ran out of a few big bags of candy. Everyone had their time in the staff doing a great job. So Melanie, Rochelle and Betty, kudos, kudos to y'all for making this happen. The cars were really cute and I think next year we can build on this foundation with local businesses and more participation from the public who ever wants to decorate their trunk and hand out candy for a safe Halloween space for kids.
Ready?
My computer, but yes, we're ready. Good morning, Commissioners. The purpose of this meeting, as discussed with the president of the board, was to make a presentation or show to the full board and seek their guidance and approval of a presentation for a meeting that's happening this afternoon, which is a public listening session on the Harbor District's, it says, our Burnham Strip Parking Project, in which Senator Becker and Supervisor Mueller will, will be hosting. And Caltrans will also be present. This presentation is on the Harbor District. It's not necessarily concerning Caltrans or anything else. We've been invited to make a presentation. And this is the presentation I'll give and also the comments that I will give with that presentation. And with that, I will begin and I'll be speaking as if I'm speaking at the event this afternoon. So Senator Becker, Supervisor Mueller, thank you for hosting this listening session on the Harbor District's effort to address public access and safe parking needs at Pillar Point Harbor, specifically the Pillar Point Surfers Beach Safe Parking Project, formerly known as the Burnham Strip Parking Project. I'm very excited to provide this brief to you and detail the efforts the Harbor District has done to coordinate a comprehensive solution to the parking issues faced by the coast side to ensure public access to the San Mateo County coasts. I'm Mr. Jim Prode, I'm the general manager of the Harbor District. And I'm here representing the Harbor District and the Harbor District Board of Commissioners to include Commissioner Slater Carter, President of the Board, Commissioner George Damarot, Vice President, Commissioner Tom Matush, Treasurer, Commissioner Bill Zemke, Secretary and Commissioner Chen Karoli. Mission of the Harbor District, we are here to serve the public by providing open, accessible and well-maintained public marine facilities that encourage and support recreational and commercial activities, beach and ocean safety, educational programs, environmental and ecological stewardship. This includes supporting public This includes supporting public access through the availability of safe parking. It's important to note that the Pillar Point Surfers Beach Safe Parking Project is a Harbor District project to support public parking. It is not a Caltrans project. It is not a project for Sam's Chowder House. It's a Harbor District project coordinating with other agencies and businesses. But the project itself is a Harbor District process addressing, a project addressing a public need. It is also important to note that no final decision's been made with respect to the Pillar Point Surfers Beach Safe Parking Project. The Harbor Commission has not directed me or made any final decisions as to the final location or design of any new parking area. Prior to any such discussion, additional information is required, including public comment. Public demand for parking in Pillar Point Harbor exceeds capacity. Capacity exceeded. Vehicles, especially trucks and boats, park on the shoulder of Highway One. This practice is both illegal and dangerous. With people opening their doors and exiting their vehicles into the travel lanes of the highway, walking down the shoulder of the highway. This is this is from this year during a time when the parking lot was exceeded. And you'll note cars and trailers use the shoulders as parking. They're both cars, trucks, and trailers. They use the entire length of the shoulder from Capistrano down to Sam's Chowder House on both sides of Highway One. The Harbor District aware, is aware of some boaters. Some boaters choose to park on Highway One even when space is available or when they assume the lots are full. However, this option will no longer be available following the Highway One Rehabilitation Project, which will place a higher demand on existing parking lots. In addition to being illegal and dangerous, the option itself, to park illegally on the shoulder, is being physically removed by Caltrans State Route One Multi-Acid Roadway Rehabilit, Rehabilitation Program. The Caltrans Rehabilitation Project will make a significant change, changes to Highway One to include the conversion of the shoulder to bike lanes. This will eliminate the option to park on the shoulder and the public will need a safe alternative to access the coastline. This includes visitors to Pillar Point Harbor. Pillar Point Harbor, public parking lots exceed the capacity for multiple reasons. Multiple reasons include recreational crab opener, which is November 1st. The recreational salmon opener, bluefin albacore bite when it's on. The commercial squid, salmon, and crab season with all the trucks and heavy equipment, sunny weekends or a simply sunny weekend or a holiday weekend, the public escaping the high temperatures over the hill or in the valley. Also exceeds during special events like the Holiday Light Boat Festival Drone Show, the RNA Foundation Beach Safety Run to Cabrillo Educational Foundation Cornhole Tournament. These are potential 4th of July celebration and drone show, a farmer's market we've been looking into and a potential activity. And again, with the Pillar Point Safety and Educational Foundation Crab Feed potential, we're working on that nonprofit as we speak. Those will fill the parking lots. And another another significant impact of parking is the mandatory use of a large amount of available parking area for truck and trailer parking. Division of Boating Waterways, as a grant condition, requires a minimum of nine by ten, nine by 40-foot parking spaces for boats and trailers in support of public boat launch. The minimum required at Pillar Point is 120, but due to space limitations, we've been, we were able to have DBW accept 119 spaces, which we have. Existing parking, to include parking lots A1, A2, A3, A4, B, C1, C2, and C3, and the launch ramp apron. Standard spaces for vehicles, we have 304. Eighty-four two-hour spaces, permit spaces are 126. ADA is 32, and again, truck and trailer spaces, which are 10 feet by 40, 119. Existing users of the parking lot include the slip holders, which we have for, over 400. Crews and passengers for commercial fishing, charter fishing, whale watching, bird watching, ash charters, scientific charters, boat launch users, fish and wildlife boat and crew, commercial buyers and employees, squid trucks, crab and salmon, supply trucks, service trucks. The public also uses the harbor to access the coastal trail, the hotel beach, perch beach, and other activities, the coastal access for kayakers, bicyclists, tourists, and coast siders and dog walkers. Also, the demand on the parking lot are from customers of several local businesses to include the fish market, the catch, Pelagic Restaurant, bait and tackle shop, Maverick Shop, Ocean Siders, Happy Moon Bay Kayak Shop, Off the Boat Sales, Morning Star Fisheries, McHenry Fisheries, and Three Captains Fisheries. And the bottom line is the parking at Pillar Point Harbor is for the public. Impact for limited parking. Public recreational access is limited, public coastal access is limited, coastal trail access is limited, charter, access to charter boats, restaurants are limited, and fishermen off the boat, they lose business. Car, trucks, and trailers are forced onto Highway One or into neighborhoods, and tax revenue for the local area is also impacted. The new parking is, area is needed to meet public demand. The intent of the district is to create a new parking lot in a green space area in order to accommodate overflow vehicle parking caused by a high number of users at Pillar Point Harbor, launch ramp, local restaurants, retail businesses, and local public beaches to include surface beach. Again, no final decision by the district has been made with, with respect to what option will be exercised. In developing Pillar Point Surfers Beach Parking Project, the district has not been operating in a vacuum and is aware of the Coastal Commission requirement for Caltrans to provide 75 parking spaces. Also aware that Sam's Chowder Heart, Chowder House will require parking for their customers. And to address both issues and the public's need for additional parking at Pillar Point Harbor, the Harbor District has been and continues to coordinate with Caltrans and Sam's Chowder House. In addition, the Harbor District has been keeping the county, Happy Moon Bay, Grana Community Services District, Midcoast Community Council up to date on our planning efforts. The initial, so staff's initial solution of the parking development involved the Burnham Strip. The project would, was envisioned to include parking trails, benches, and a park open space. It involved two parcels owned by the district, two privately owned parcels, Caltrans right of way, and land under the jurisdiction of San Mateo County. Why Burnham Strip was the initial idea? The Harbor District owned the property of the Burnham Strip. The parcels were, are undeveloped and there's no immediate plans for the parcels. The parcels are centrally located to the launch ramp, coastal trail, GCSD's Burnham Park, Surface Beach, Hotel Beach, and Sam's Chowder House. However, the zoning on the Burnham, in addition, the zoning to Burnham Strip is also very restrictive. It's zoned as EG with the purpose to provide low intensity development at Burnham Strip, which preserves to the greatest degree possible the visual and open space characteristics of this property. One of those approved permitted uses under EG is public parking for surface beach. In considering the Burnham Strip parcels for parking, there were several factors the district was considering for the actual construction and operation of the lot. If built, this included maintaining the view corridor, maintenance of feeling of open space, providing public access, permeable surfaces. It would be patrolled day and night, maintained and cleaned by the Harbor District. It would have native landscaping, comply with dark skies. Stormwater would be considered and complied with, with requirements. There would be no overnight parking, no RV parking, no large commercial vehicles. To take the project beyond the simple idea stage and to keep it moving, given the Caltrans project was also moving forward, the Harbor District issued a request for a proposal to develop plans for a parking lot on the Burnham Parcels. District using the RFP process to assist the district with the design and engineering and public outreach and engagement. In addition to ensuring the district was fully informed of options to fill the demand for public parking, the consultant hired through the RFP process considered not only the property owned by the district on the strip, but also considered unencumbered district-owned property on the west side of Highway One. The consultant identified four options for consideration to include separated parking on shoulder, the shoulder of Highway One. Burnham Strip access avenue, access from Avenue Alhambra. Burnham Strip access from Highway One and launch ramp properties access from Pillar Point Harbor and Highway One. A few words of caution with respect to where the district is in the planning process on the Pillar Point Surfers Beach Safe Parking Project. The district is in the very initial stages of consideration of any potential parking solution. No studies have been conducted, traffic, environmental, biological, to determine the visibility, viability of each parcel to support a parking area. Not all pros and cons have been developed and identified or considered for each parcel. And the district is still in the process of collecting public comment. And again, no option has been approved by the Harbor Board as of this date. First option was parking along Highway One in the Caltrans right of way. This option included carving into the Caltrans right of way on Highway One to provide parking along Highway One off the shoulder. This option was not considered viable for several reasons. The first, the property's not owned by the Harbor District. The second would not be able to park, does not solve the truck and trailer problem combination, as we, trucks and trailers would not be able to park in those parking spots. And then the safety of parking along the edge of a highway. The second option involved the Burnham Strip parcel with the entrance from Avenue Alhambra. Third option was the same parking lot on the Burnham Strip, but the entrance from Highway One. And then the, however, with the Burnham Strip properties and working with the consultant, we've identified several concerns with the Burnham Strip concept. They include extremely tight, limited area to maneuver trailers. Attaining adjacent private property is very cost prohibitive. Requires a crosswalk and overpass to Highway, or overpass to Highway, over Highway One, distance to launch ramp, distance to surface beach. Logistics, driving to and from that lot, how, how would trucks turn around and get to those lots? Possible alternative better use of the parcels such, parcels such as the Deer Creek Daylighting and public concern. The fourth option, the launch ramp properties located between parking lot C3 and Sam's Chowder House, Sam's Chowder House on the west side of Highway One. This option includes vehicle parking, including several parking, parking spaces that could be combined to take truck-trailer combos in the event of the existing launch ramp parking lots are exceeded, and 15 RV parking spaces to provide increased public access to the coast. Positive considerations for this option. If selected, is located at the Pillar Point Launch Ramp, located on the coastal trail. It's adjacent to the breakwater and surface beach, has more room for maneuverability of trucks and trailers. And it may satisfy the Coastal Committee, Coastal Commission requirements for Caltrans to provide 75 parking spaces. May support local businesses such as Sam's Chowder House, Pillar Point RV Park. There's no crosswalk or overpass needed, no additional property purchase are necessary. The next step for the Harbor District in this process is for the Harbor District staff with the consultant to further develop these concepts and present to the Harbor Commission on November 19th, 2026, at our next regularly scheduled board meeting. In closing, the Pillar Point Surfers Beach Safe Parking Project is a Harbor District project to support public demand for parking. The San Mateo County Harbor Board of Commissioners has not made any final decisions. Any interested party or member of the public is encouraged to participate in the process. Comments can be sent to my email at jaypru@smharbor.com or the deputy board secretary at info@smharbor.com. And I want to thank you for your time. And that is the end of my presentation.
We're going to start and come out to the public and then session. The subject matter is how to whether or not we want to present, make this presentation to the member of the Board of Supervisors in the state senate. And, and if so, what changes? So let's start with comments from the public. Let's see, no hands. One, Janet.
Thank you. And one of your slides, you had a typo. You said that the meeting's in 2026, I think.
For some reason, I'm already there. I'm praying that I'm already there.
So I have a few comments.
Thank you for that, Jim.
Thank you. So first of all, I was at the pumpkin fest and they have the, you know, the big lot on Highway One. It sort of goes into a valley. It's below where they have the seafood house, et cetera. And so it was full and for some reason, you know, they're allowed to park there during the pumpkin fest. So I think that if you're looking at parking and overflow, a consideration could be, you know, doing something on these festival days or whatever you want to call them, just like they do down there, as opposed to this whole project where we're paving, paying $450,000 just for a report, et cetera, et cetera. I also would like to comment that the new title for this project, Pillar Point Surfers Beach Safe Parking Project, it used to be called the Burnham Strip Parking Project. I think the title is misleading. I think it's deceptive to say that it's a safe parking project and I would respectfully request that we go back to the old title. And I also question this whole idea that the parking succeeded, is exceeded and that we have a need for this. I saw the, the video. I go down there virtual all the time. Yes, it is on some days there's overflow. But it's not a consistent problem. It's a problem that does, we're, we're putting in a lot that's going to cause a lot of issues, particularly for crossing the highway, which is very, very dangerous and a big concern to everybody. And those are my comments. And I would think that we should not present the slideshow as presented today. And I would respectfully request that the show that we saw today, that somehow be downloaded to your website.
Will be.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have any hands up online?
Yep.
Who said? Dan Haggerty? Dan Haggerty. Dan, please.
Yes, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I met with Supervisor Mueller on Friday. And I had concerns because this meeting was supposed to be singularly for the public to give comments to Caltrans. And concern is why is the Harbor District going to consume time in this process? I listened to Mr. Pruitt's presentation just now. I feel that it's, number one, too long. Let me back up. Supervisor Mueller said clearly that the intent of having a presentation by the general manager was to give minimal facts to help with the conversation. I feel that the presentation is filled with propaganda, misinformation. A lot of, a lot of misleading information. Number one, claims that off the highway parking is unsafe and illegal. It can be made safe and it is not illegal. I have a video of the CHP captain from the county of San Mateo clearly stating that it's legal. Also de facto, it's been legal for over a decade. I don't want to go into all the details of the propaganda and other misinformation.
You're over time.
Oh, I'm only allowed two minutes?
You are beyond two minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Person we have is Sid Young. Sid Young.
Thank you. I apologize earlier, I was not logged in in time. So I thought I was speaking on this topic and I didn't realize I was talking in general public comment, but anyway, I still am not in favor of having a crosswalk or having any east side parking. Also, I'm dyslexic, so if I accidentally conflated west with east, I want you to have your parking lot on the east side, sorry, west side be the parking that you choose. I think it was your option three. It might help to have Jim come and speak to the, at the meeting, but briefly, it wasn't planned and it kind of does look like they muscled their way in at the last minute, so no offense to Jim, but that was not the plan, so anyway. And the one thing that maybe he could put in the timeline is Director Slater Carter had started to, her petition with Lynn Erickson to have Caltrans not put their bike lanes on both sides of Highway one that eliminated so much parking, because that timeline is very important, it kind of makes it look suspicious that all of a sudden, after that whole thing went about, that with the Coastal Commission, and all of a sudden then the Harbor District spends eight and a half million dollars to buy all these vacant lots. So they were like at cross purposes, it seemed to me. So I'd like to see that timeline too. Thank you very much, and maybe we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Sid, and I'm going to make a comment to that unfounded accusation. I've been on this coast side for forty-seven years. I've lived in Half Moon Bay and Montero. I was very concerned, the county under Caltrans' direction went along at the Planning Commission level unanimously to remove all the parking on both sides of the highway to put in both sides of bike lanes. Dan Hagerty spoke that day and I spoke. Dan chose not to join me in the appeal nor to file his own appeal. My husband was dying, and I wrote this appeal and worked on it because I care so much about safety and the beaches. My kids grew up here. We couldn't get to the beaches when they were little. Not the beaches right here, we could go to Montero Beach, but that was about it. And as far as the accusation that the Harbor District bought this land to make money and to go into this parking based on my appeal, they were totally separate. My seat on this district is to serve the county population and the public population here, the coast siders. I have been paying attention to the Harbor District since we moved here in nineteen seventy-nine, when my husband was financing fishermen. And I got to know the harbor and I realized what a valuable asset and resource it is to the county and to the public here. I am appalled at Sid's unfounded accusation. So just please know, I keep my ethics clean. I do not mix my personal biases with my service here. But it is important for us as a Harbor District who serves the entire county to pay attention to beach access. I was one of the people who voted for the Coastal Act for beach access. In order to have beach access, you have to have beach parking. Not everybody can ride their bicycles over the hill here. So thank you very much. Let's move on. I don't see any more public comment on the subject on the agenda. Let's close the public hearing and move on to.
One more person.
Oh, one more, okay.
They just raised their hand a second ago.
Go ahead.
Hi, just a quick question, just to understand the situation. It seems that there's two parking spots, one across some spanglers and one that's designated at Surfers Beach where the skateboard ramp is. It's very confusing what C three is and which parking lots people are talking about. And now there's a name change for the Safe Parking Project. But one of the questions I have is what can the Harbor District folks say why there isn't, is insufficient parking at the harbor itself? Because those of us who live here frequently find empty parking lots, even on the crowdedest days and busiest days and sunniest days, including festivals. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed, we'll move back to the board for comments and suggestions for edits. And let's, let's just start with Virginia. No, we're going to start with Virginia, you're on my left.
Okay, Jim, thanks for the presentation, I thought it was excellent, and I think it's something that the, that should be presented. I just have a couple, actually, kind of minor, but I'm looking at slides fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen where you talk about businesses and what the parking lot users, or who the parking lot users are and for what reason, so I just want to say that basically these parking lots support local economic development. And thirty-five percent of the Harbor District's budget is from enterprise districts and includes tenants like Keating or Hen in the RV parking lot, and they have been a great tenant. We renegotiated their lease and they've always been very good partners with the Harbor District and, you know, things that get paid for come from our tenants that include the RV parking lot, or the RV park and the tenant row, the two restaurants, Mavericks and the bait shop. So nothing is free and we're trying our best at least to be cost neutral, so let me make that very clear. So on slides, those slides, Jim, I mean, you list all of this, but I would say that the theme for something like that would be to support local economic development, and I would actually, if you feel like that it's necessary, add that, you know, the Harbor District does derive thirty-five percent of its budget from enterprise endeavors, which would help this. We're not in the business of necessarily charging for parking, I'm not for that necessarily at all, but these parking lots will help support this endeavor that we have to meet for our budget. Number one. Number two, slide thirty-eight. Sorry, I'm just about this eye condition, I can't really see very well, Jim, but it's in closing, it's the last paragraph and thing that talks about that we invite the public or encourage the public to participate. I would say that, I would include that we have invited and will continue to invite. And that, and yeah, I mean, everyone can call it propaganda, whatever. There's a lot of propaganda going on here, this is Jim's presentation, and I just want to make it very clear that we have invited the public. And actually, you have also, Jim, made a public presentation to the MCC, you've been invited, and I would thank the MCC for allowing you to participate and make the presentation on parking. So this is not the first time that the parking issue has been in the public realm. So I would just make those changes because the slide currently makes it look like we encourage it, but actually we've been encouraging for the future, but we've actually been encouraging and allowing, well, not even allowing, actually seeking participation from the public for this issue. Thank you, thank you. George.
Let me first say I'm very sympathetic to your concerns. I'm elected to this board by District Two and that's Pacifica. And if you've ever seen Pacifica on any weekend now, it's insanity along Highway one. The parking lot, the state beach of Pacifica is filled to capacity every single weekend. Even if it's raining, it's packed with surfers, it's packed with people, where does everybody go? They go into the neighborhoods. During the dog surfing competition, tens of thousands of people showed up from all over the world. And I couldn't even get from the back of Lindemar Valley to the Safeway on the side roads because everything from a mile back was blocked. Ladies and gentlemen, this is coming, people want to come to the coast, they want to see things, they want to come to see the beauty. This is for the entire coast and the entire population of California to come and see what we have. So it's important to plan out the infrastructure that we need to support. And we're doing the same thing, the challenges at Pacifica Pier are even worse because the neighborhood's right there, there is no separating the neighborhood from the area of recreation. People fish on that pier, they walk that area. The entire community is parked up every single weekend. I don't know where the neighbors park unless it's in their own driveway. So, you know, and I think a lot of us would have that same story, we're sympathetic to that concern. That's why we want to be careful, involve the public to make sure that we can, you know, resolve these issues to everybody's, everybody's positive. With that, I think it's also an excellent presentation. I think it's very important for Senator Becker and Ray Mueller to understand we are just kind of in the beginning of this process, we want to be part of that process, and there are no decisions that have been made by this board or anyone. We're looking at alternatives. We're looking at the pros and cons. You can't do any of that without data. So people that said, well, why did you put out this contract? That's to get all this data, that's to get the traffic information so that we can make educated decisions. So based on that, Jim, I also think the presentation's fine, and it's important to show that we did have been involved in the public. Thank you.
I would like to thank Jim for the presentation here, and I do want to echo George's comments, so we do appreciate the comments from the public, and if you may not think that we read them, we do read them, they are in our record. We take all of those into consideration. One question I have, and I'm still kind of confused on the generation of the meeting this afternoon, is it about Caltrans, is it about us, is it about the whole process? There seems to be some confusion on actually what the subject matter is.
The wire is to discuss for the public and Caltrans to discuss the Harbor District's potentially using Burnham Strip as a parking lot.
So it would include comments to Caltrans and just, I would think that this presentation is totally appropriate for that presentation, to get the information out.
I'll make it clear, Bill, this is not the Harbor District's meeting.
No, I know that.
And so I want to make it very clear that we were invited as a participant. And whatever happens with this meeting, it is between, I guess, the Caltrans, Caltrans and Supervisor Mueller's office, you know, to listen to what the public has to say, and I guess in this regard, we're kind of like the public as a public agency, and we were invited to speak. So to me, there's no confusion, I mean, at the time and the notice was confusing, but it seemed like this was a meeting that was always with regard to Caltrans eliciting meeting. And that we were not, this is not the Harbor District's meeting, we're not putting it on.
I just wanted to be, I'm going to read it directly, so I'm quoting it properly, the "What of the meeting is joint Supervisor Mueller, Senator Becker, and Caltrans as they take public comment regarding the Harbor District potentially turning a portion of the Burnham Strip into a parking lot?" At one o'clock today at the Oceana Hotel.
But I still support making the presentation, I think it provides information and we want to be transparent.
Exactly.
I totally support the presentation that the general manager's going to present, but I was listening to the public comment and a member of the public talked about the occasional nature of the overflow parking. Let me give it to you from a different point of view. That overflow caused a great deal of heartburn and concern from our tenants that said, we didn't have business because nobody could park anywhere near us. We've been going through that for quite some time with our tenants. We had charter boat customers that left the harbor when they couldn't find parking. So the charter boats lost fares, the Harbor District lost passenger service fees. So the parking is needed, this happens over a dozen times a year, basically whenever there's an event or good fishing. Also, the amount of things that have been going on and next door, I believe a number of people and members of the public, oh, the nearhand family, an apology over comments that were not true or correct. People hear these things and start repeating them, and it was very disingenuous, and I'm sorry that you had to go through that.
Then?
Mr. Carter, the comment on that too, it's a joint CDP. So it's not just the RV Park CDP, it is a Harbor District RV Park CDP, and I can, when we received the complaint of non-compliance, I did have staff go down there and review the CDP with on-scene conditions. And both parties are complete compliance with the CDP.
That's the propaganda on the other side, which I don't appreciate, so thank you. That clarification, Jim.
This was supposed to be a meeting of stakeholders, the MCC was invited, GCSD was invited. They have chosen not to participate. That's their choice, they are independent elected bodies, and they get to make their own decisions, and I don't understand why they're not participating, but certainly with the community center that the entire community of El Granada voted for, there will be a parking lot that's required for ADA reasons and for community use reasons. Not everybody can walk up and down these steep hills in the back of us in El Granada, and many of them don't have sidewalks. Public, public comment is limited, thank you, is closed. I was just clarifying that you voted for a parking lot with the community center. Otherwise, oh, well then, then people will be parking in the neighborhoods. That's fine, that's your choice.
Yeah, we didn't vote for the park, it was never.
I will, I will double check with GCSD. And if it is other than as I said, I will respond at our next public meeting and rescind my comment. That said, Coastal Act requires parking for people to be able to access the beaches. I spent my own time, my own money to appeal this project because the county did not care if there was parking or visitor access for our beaches. It was a five-oh vote at the Planning Commission. I made the appeal because I live here. I've lived here for forty-six years, and the beaches are so important to this community and to this state. When I have been walking out on the Mavericks Trail, I've asked people where they come from. And oftentimes, that trail is over, the parking lot for that is overparked and people end up parking on the narrow two-lane road, which becomes a one-lane road because of the parking. And people come from all over the state to come here. This is an area that creates jobs. It creates businesses, and we all need to work together to act our coastal resources. And the only way we can protect our coastal resources is if people come and enjoy them, otherwise they see no reason to protect them. They go, oh, why, we don't need beaches, we don't go there. We don't need parking, we don't go there. We don't go there. The mission of this district is, as, as it says in our mission statement, pretty clear. And we are here to serve the public. And that's what we are doing. I think Jim's presentation is good. I think given as long as it could have been, because we all have a lot to say, I think he was very restrained in doing a good outline. And I do also want to provide kudos for the Nearhand family, because they have been involved in so many good things on this coast as community members, in many, many ways, that each of us benefits and we're not even aware of. So I will finish with thanks to the Nearhands, thanks to the public for being here and giving us your opinions. None of us is good as all of us. And we're all making these decisions together. Some of us have different constituencies, but that's okay. We, we are a representative government, and we represent your voices as well as other voices. So thank you very much for being here, George.
Final thing from me, I promise. I want to also thank Jim for the presentation, but more so is how Jim responded to the public and inviting them in to come and talk to him. When he's seen a lot of information out there, and it's not correct, and said that incorrect information is repeated and repeated, Jim went ahead and said, come and talk to me, just like the Nearhands now have invited. Come and talk to them. If you're challenged by something that you think they're doing there, go and talk to them, eye to eye. You know, I'm really getting old, you know, and I'm more the old school of talking to people, you know, walk along the project and and actually see. Because I found that people are willing to say things in writing on on social media, and they're not quite willing to do that face to face. Go and meet with these people, find out what the true information is. Jim, thanks again, and the Nearhands for offering meeting with with the public on all these kinds of third important concerns, no doubt about it. So again, thank you, Jim, for, and your staff.
Bill, do you have any last comment? Tom? Virginia?
Jim, I'm going to thank you again for allowing the public to come in. That's why I wanted you to change that last slide. You have invited the public to come in and talk to you. I think that's really important. But I think everyone knows, because you've done it in our meeting, and you've been very good about communicating. I want to thank Keith for inviting the public to also come and speak. And I know that you are very, very open. And if the public doesn't go and speak to Keith, then that's really on them. But I really appreciate the invitation, because you've been in this spot many times where that RV park has been a source of contention. And you've always been very willing to work with the public, or at least listen. So thank you. So Jim, again, I think that one slide, I think it's like 38, is really important to show that we have been a, we have been very open for public participation and public comment. That's, that's the main reason I wanted to change that slide. Thank you.
And we need, Keith, no, after afterwards, thank you. I want to say to the folks leaving, and the folks who are here, and the folks who are watching, double check your facts. It's just like with anything else. Somebody takes a stand, and they repeat something they heard. And remember that game we used to play in kindergarten and high school, where you called telephone or what's new gossip? Things get inserted, they get amplified, they get changed, they get left out. Please, if you have questions, come and ask us where we are. That's what we're doing today. And I thank you all for coming. And now we're going to take a vote on whether the board is going to approve sending, allowing me and Jim to represent them at this meeting that starts at one at the Ocean.
Oceano.
Oceano Hotel in the ballroom. I think it's the ballroom that is at the far end. So it's, it's only a few hundred feet from where it was originally scheduled. But if you park, you go up the steps, and then you go to your right. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to have General Manager Jim Pruitt present this presentation with the edited, edits that were.
As edited.
As edited. And to have President Slater Carter make a comment, I guess, before Jim's presentation.
I will introduce Jim.
On behalf of the Harbor Board, as actually on behalf of the elected Harbor Board.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Slater Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Jane Corrali?
Aye.
Commissioner Matush?
Aye.
Mr. Zumpke?
Aye.
Mr. Domra.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? So move?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion is adjourned.